Okay, good evening. Good evening and welcome. This is, uh, tonight is Thursday, September 23rd, 2021. Time is 6:30 PM and this is a regular scheduled meeting of the District 191 School Board. Welcome to everybody that's joining us, watching this at home, joining in person. Thank you. Dr. Chester, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will begin our meeting tonight with approval of tonight's meeting agenda. I will take a motion for that.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester. A second, please.
Second.
Seconded by, um...
Director Connor.
What's that? Director Connor, yes. I'm sorry, I was reading something and talking at the same time. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? Hearing none, the motion passes. We will now move to the information component of our meeting tonight. We'll begin by receiving a report about ESER III Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. Speaking tonight on this will be Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services and Dr. Battle, our Superintendent.
Thank you Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. So you may recall that Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act. We are calling it in our state ESER III. So previously, we had ESER I and II, and so this is the latest round. And we have engaged with our community, looked at our data, built upon information received throughout the COVID pandemic from our constituents, and tonight we're going to share our priorities for this American Rescue Plan ESER III funding. So if you look at the overview tonight, we're going to review the possible uses and availability, which are the guidelines given to us by the federal government and Minnesota Department of Education. We will share again our 191 allocation and priority areas, our draft of the spending plan, constituent engagement, and next steps. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Ryder, our Executive Director of Business Services.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. As we take a look at our grants, these are the foundational needs that we are looking to meet within the grant. This is a grant we're going to be applying for, for, by October 1st. The amount of the allocation for this particular grant is a total of $16,141,531, and the timeline for which we can spend this money is from July of 2020 to September of 2024. Per the federal requirements, there are a number of things that are eligible under this grant. Eighty percent of the money can be used in areas of keeping students healthy and connected to learning, counteracting the effects of lost learning time, preparing for reopening in the fall of 2021, air quality projects, mental health supports, and historically underserved populations. Twenty percent of the funds must be used for outside of the normal school day, enrichment opportunities such as summer learning, after-school enrichment camps, extending the day for the school year or for the day itself. So as we take a look at 191 funding priorities, we want to see, just a moment. We have three categories in which our funding priorities lie, and that is on this screen that you can see. The information presented represents a draft planned at this time for spending funds received as part of the American Rescue Plan. We will continue to monitor the needs and adjust the plan as necessary. For instance, the information that you will see tonight reflects the expectation that most of the positions that we have funded through the American Rescue Plan funds thus far in ESER I and II will continue for one or more years. Exact positions may change based on our feedback we receive, future needs assessments, and our changing community health conditions and other factors. So the first funding priority for ISD 191, we have listed the various different categories of funding, what the money would be spent on. You can see there's a $4.24 million sitting on this slide here that represents our direct student support for academic, social, and emotional. We recognize that academic instruction has been interrupted due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our programming and services will be provided to address our student needs as a result of that disruption, including academics, social-emotional growth, and mental health. This list reflects only the student support plans that will be paid for using the American Rescue Plan funding. The next slide is the, another funding priority of building connections between schools and families. During the pandemic, connections between our families and the schools have been more difficult to maintain due to distance requirements. So as 191 works to recover from the pandemic, building strong connections with our families will be essential to student success. The list that you see here reflects only those that are related to the family engagement efforts that would be paid for using the ESER III funding. Our third category is mitigating the effects of COVID-19. We continue to prioritize the health and safety of our students, our staff, and community members. We will implement health and safety measures to mitigate the continuing and potential effects of the COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with guidance from federal, state, and local health officials. The list here reflects only the mitigation efforts that would be paid for under the American Rescue Fund planning, I'm sorry, American Rescue Plan funding. In addition, there would be about $8.25 million that would be the maintenance of programs and services as we know them today, and that would be a portion of the ESER III funding as well. That leaves us with the remaining amount of just over $2 million that we would then look to utilize depending upon the feedback we receive and the needs that do come up as they, as they arise. So there is a, a public engagement portion of this process in, in applying for the ESER III funds, and one of the things we want to do is make sure that people are clear on how we plan to use these funds and what, what needs we plan to meet. As we talked about the direct student impact, sorry, direct student, uh, direct student support, this is a slide that references the number of FTEs, for example, that we're talking about. These are existing in ESER II, and we would expect those to consider, to continue in the ESER III. So you can see there's an additional 14 FTE of teachers, two of clerical and tech, and five intervention specialists, credit recovery, and two of the cultural liaison, translation. So as part of our, our engagement about the plan, we have done quite a bit of conversation. Dr. Battle, did you want to cover this slide?
Yes, I'll take that.
I'll pass that over to you. Thank you.
So we're not starting from scratch in our engagement. As you know, we have, throughout our response to the pandemic, we have surveyed, had focus groups for parents, students, staff members. And so we also consulted with our COVID-19 advisory team. We have a District 191 Learning Model Team, the Superintendent's Race Advisory Council, and also community partners. So based on previous surveys, we started to engage this year with our operational leadership team and building leadership team. And so we presented the draft plan to them for their feedback. In turn, the departmental leaders and principals would consult and share with their building leadership team, departmental members, or at the school level, the PTOs. Next steps, continue to gather feedback from those building leadership teams, staff, and parent advisory groups. Share the draft spending plan with parents, students, and community to gather feedback, and that has been sent out. So it's open right now. So community members, if you'd like to provide your comments or suggestions on our draft spending plan, please look at the survey and share your feedback. We hope to get the feedback from the board tonight. We will update the plan based on your feedback and what we glean from our constituents. And then by October 1st, we must submit our District 191 application for these funds. We must include a narrative of the seams from the constituent feedback, number of participants, and then some other requirements as a part of the plan, as well as all the financial components of the plan that you saw before you tonight. And then the plan to, for the next two years, but then that reserve to see if any additional needs would arise. And with that, that concludes our report for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will open it up for Board member questions or comments, please. Ask any questions? Dr. Roll, go ahead, please.
Turn my mic on. Just a couple clarifying questions. The June ESER report mentioned college visits and field trips, and I wasn't able to glean if those are still in here or not.
They are not part of ESER III at this moment. There, there will be a portion of it that will fall into that, but we're first going to use other funds that are available to us under the governor's ARP funding. And so, because that will end sooner than ESER III, at this point in time, that's where we're focusing the use of those funds.
So the plan is to maintain or possibly expand using those funds?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And one, one other note, Director Alt, about the college visits. So it was hoped that they would begin this fall or later, but it's been delayed, and so that's the other reason. The colleges aren't quite ready.
We do the best.
To have our high school students come visit.
We do the best we can.
It might be some virtual, which would be a less cost, so we'll see.
Okay. So, the next question is related to the two cultural liaisons, and I, understanding that, the addition of those two positions, understanding that they're in great demand, and also knowing that, you know, the existing staff does their, you know, their best to meet the needs of, of our families and students. Have we assured ourselves that adding these two positions is the best way to use those funds as opposed to investing in cultural liaisons differently?
So these, this will be invested differently in the fact that these two cultural liaisons will work primarily on translations, which is a weakness of ours at the moment.
Got it.
So we want to make sure that we're focusing on that translation.
So then, existing cultural liaisons would not necessarily be pulled in in the same way that they might have in the past. Awesome.
Dr. Earl, just clarification on your question, because the slide and question reads possible continued staffing. You're actually talking about two additional FTEs.
So ESER II is going to begin covering that cost. As we bring them onboard this year, they are not yet hired. And as we bring them onboard, we'll start with the ESER II. ESER III will continue that for the next two, two years beyond.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Which actually dovetails on my next question, which is, you know, and of course, this is crystal ball conversation right now. If everything stays the same, and the ESER funds go away, then the FTE that's identified here would automatically be discontinued.
By that point in time, we will have to have prioritized our needs for our budget and determined that which is going to remain and, and continue.
Okay. And then one last question. If there is a change to the plan, I'm assuming then, Dr. Battle, that it'll come back to us before it's submitted?
So Director Alt, members of the Board, so in our fiscal year 23 planning, through that budget process, that's when the board will be updated. So Lisa, you want to review that rollout, since this will start for fiscal year 23?
The application, though, the, what's due in Octo- October 1st.
So you'll get updated through the normal budget process, because it'll be part of fiscal year 23, correct?
Yes. So we will submit our plan that is due October 1st, because that's the deadline the, the federal government has for us. The MDE is enforcing for us to be able to just process this. There's a, there's a lot of funds at stake here. And so the, the concept is start early with your planning. They, they acknowledge this is planning at this point in time. As we get further into the development of our, our fiscal year 23 budget, which is the first year in which we intend to use these funds, there are some of these funds that we might choose to use sooner, and at that point in time, we would be letting you know what those look like, because that'll be part of our revised budget. But that's only because they are going to deal with that 20%, which is for extending the day or outside of the school day programming and such. So those are unique programs that it takes a while to plan and get them up and running, and they may need to start in the summer. And so whenever you're doing that, it's like, that part might happen before your July 1st starts, right? So, aside from that, that would be then what we would include in our FY 23 budget information as we roll this forward, is how are we, which, which of the dollars within our budget are going to be funded then by the ESER III, and what is not, as we did similarly with the ESER II?
So you're asking for information based on our feedback, if what we shared in the slides will be different in the application?
Right. My, my question is, you know, like with any other MDE plan that we submit, it comes to the board in its final draft, in its final version. If there are changes to be made between now and the time that it's submitted, that would, that would come to us for a final review. Understanding that, understanding that it's planning, of course. Like, you know, the Achievement and Integration Plan to MDE comes to us.
So the Board, Director Alt, members of the Board, the total amount, the $16 million is not going to change that you authorized.
Right.
The details that staff and I will put together, that's what will change. And so you're asking to know what that change is?
If there's an application, typically the application comes to the Board.
For titles, we don't typically bring those to the Board. We also don't, like I've got about 12 different grants with all these federal funds. So I, I haven't been bringing each and every single one of those grants to the Board with a final line item. That isn't something that we typically do. A&amp;I is handled separately. It's not on the SERV system, so it does have its uniqueness to it. But the, the, the federal funds that are coming to us at this point in time, they are managing all through the SERVs. So it's very similar processes for the, the title and other types of grants that we have that way. We track them all with special coding, so that is very much available for us to be able to review exactly how those are being spent. But I guess it's just not been our practice to bring each of those forward for a final review, or even as we modify those budgets.
Given that there's community input that's happening, and additional staff, you know, I think it, it would be helpful for that to come to the Board, whether it's before it's submitted or after. I, I would like to personally understand what's sent into MDE, given the dollar amount.
My interpretation is this is what's being sent into MDE, right?
Right, because they're asking for narratives and a plan as to like, what are the categories of how you're going to spend that money? They are not asking us for line item yet, until you get that budget submission. So at this point, at this layer of the application process for these funds, it's really more about, tell us your plan, tell us the feedback you got from your community, because they want to make sure that we're having that back and forth, and help us understand where you plan to move and use these funds. When we reach the point where we're actually submitting a line item budget, they have told us they will be comparing the narrative to that budget to see if it's aligning, and if not, they'll be contacting us and working with us to make sure that those do align. And that process then it just continues and moves forward from there. Given that this is not intended to be utilized very much in the current fiscal year, I would intend, I would expect that these funds would be included in the line items that we are selecting and choosing for FY 23. And as we do that, we will identify which of these are then ESER, and which is not, and so that we can better understand how we're coming. Some of, some of our concern and wondering is, as we have ESER II, we want to spend that first, and that's the intent of the federal government, too. You spend your ESER II first before you spend your ESER III. So depending upon the needs and how, how quickly these funds last us through this year, or if there's any carryover into the next year, that might shift a little bit, because we're going to, we're going to use the funds as we need to based on the needs that are presented to us.
So for the intents and purposes of this application,
Yep.
I'm hearing you say that there aren't going to be significant changes because it is so, so top-level, Dr. Battle.
No, I think it's consistent in what we've heard in those three broad areas that we're getting. And, yeah. We're not getting any disagreement with the three broad areas. And then what's interesting, what we're finding, what, since we just opened it, they're asking us to fund things that we're funding through other. It's not ESER III. So I don't think there's going to be major changes.
At this point.
Pretty much getting consistent from the previous surveys throughout the pandemic.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, the, I mean, there's three broad areas, and there's 12 categories here, so this is a really broad, very light-touch plan, right? I mean, that's the intent. I understand that. If I may, if I, I think the request is that if there is something significant that is changed from the intent of this document, then we would like to know that.
Sure.
And, you know, just drawing examples, if you decide to buy six new school buses or something, you know, like that, that we, you know, that's a quick change in what we see here, then we need to be made aware of that, so. Is that fair? Any other questions or comments on the subject matter?
Yes, I do have a question about the Support Services.
Yes.
You included technology and chemical counseling in there. Can you give me a little bit of background of why those two were chosen?
I'm sorry, which one is it that you?
Uh, the direct student support.
Okay.
So I will, uh, Director Said and members of the Board, I'll ask members of my team to fill in. I can answer about the chemical counseling support. So our communities are not immune to what we're seeing in the natural, the national trend that some people have been coping with the pandemic's effects by the use of chemicals. And so our teenagers are not immune to that. And so when we looked at that data from the counties we serve, and also talking to our secondary staff, and whether it's counselors, social workers, that it was felt that that was a need. And I do know that's been a, a highlight of the city of Savage, Mayor Williams, looking at that, and then it's just with the pandemic, it's been exacerbated. Any other information about that one from team members?
Is there more clarification you'd like on that?
So that would not have anything to do with, like, already the connections we have with Headway. This is more for the social workers and, and those who are already involved in that.
No, actually, we are, I'll ask Director Stephanie White, Student Support Services, actually, uh, I'll let her speak to that. It's not with Headway or our current social workers.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Battle. We've been in conversation over the last couple years around how we can support issues surrounding addiction, alcohol, chemicals. Principal Hulkey has been a large part of that, and we have partnered and had several meetings with community partners around that. Then COVID hit, and so that kind of put, was put to the side, but like Dr. Battle said, our, our conversations continued probably about the middle of COVID now towards the end. And so we're really excited about this opportunity and partnership. We have several people who have come forth to say they are interested in partnering with us, and they specialize in those preventative conversations that we can have with teenagers and young adolescents, as well as if somebody was experiencing abuse or, or addiction. And so I think, you know, putting this money towards that, I think will really help us in our partnership with Headway as well. As they focus on our mental health, oftentimes they're looking for outside resources, and so to have one in-house to work collaboratively with Headway would be amazing. Thank you.
And the technology.
Yeah, so our, during this pandemic period of time, we have found that there's a, a fair amount of repair of devices that needs to, needs to occur to keep our devices that we have in the hands of our students operating, functioning properly. So there's been a bit of support needed in that area. And in addition, some additional clerical, there's a lot of purchasing of, of items and with the backlog in the supply chain, that has become more of a critical matter for our technology department particularly, and in support of our, our virtual academy. So those are, those are areas in which that support service is really needed most.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions? I have a couple things quick. So you have alluded to this as an application a few times, but also addressed it with a certain, with an amount of certainty. Can you help me understand, is this, is there a risk that we don't get this money?
No.
Okay.
The money has been allocated to us. We've accepted it. The process then is for us to complete the narrative application, portion, the narrative portion of the application, and then we would have that accepted by MDE, so that they, they tell us, yep, you're going down the right path, kind of thing. And then we would go forward with the line item budget for that particular grant, and we would submit that, and that's where they'll then compare, contrast that with our narrative, and provide us approval on that process, at which point then we can begin to spend those funds.
Okay. You know, there's clearly a fair amount of money involved here. And I, I, this is more of a, just a expression than a question, but I am concerned that we tie ourselves up, especially programs that involve people that are working for us with money that is, you know, a one-time allocation. So I, I hope we keep that well in mind, because it's not going to be there forever, so.
So Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, if you recall when Jason Sellers presented the summer school programming information, one of the principles I did ask staff to look at, items that we could possibly sustain. And so we are keeping a keen eye on that. We are also in finances, tracking everything paid through ESER separately. And so we can remind people throughout that it was funded through this influx of money. And so, thank you for that point. Yes, the money is scheduled to end fiscal '25, 2025?
'24.
'24.
We may be able to stretch it a little further into '25, but '24 is the year we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda tonight will be to receive a report about multilingual learners. And speaking tonight will be Maria, and I apologize, Arago.
Arago.
Arago, I apologize. I should have asked you that before. Coordinator of Multilingual Education, and Amina Oftendall, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the Board. It's really my pleasure tonight to introduce and share with, have Maria Argo, Ar- Argo. Just an overview of our multilingual learner program and how we're supporting our multilingual students and families. This has been, this has been the first year of kind of a, that recovery piece of wanting to make sure that our students who are still learning English in addition to their own preferred language are supported in their academic progress. So I'm going to let Maria speak more about that and share those details with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amina. Thank you, members of the Board and Dr. Battle. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to, to speak with you this evening about multilingual learners, families, and programming in our district. The first visual I'd like to share with you really provides an excellent illustration of just how multilingual we are as a district. And of the roughly 8,000 students that we have in our district... And, um, of the roughly eight thousand students that we have in our district, almost four thousand of those students, um, have, uh, a language other than English or in addition to English that they speak at home, or that a family member speaks at home, or that they've been exposed to at home. As you can see in the visual, uh, there are ninety-six different languages, uh, represented, um, in, by the families and students in our district. Among the multilingual learners, uh, in our district, we have typically, um, each school year between fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred, um, English learners. These are, uh, these are multilingual learners who qualify for, um, English language acquisition instruction from, uh, an English language teacher. We also have in our district, um, many recently exited students who were designated as English learners, um, and have recently exited services. Um, but we, our English language teachers also work with, with those students. Across the district, we have, uh, forty-one full-time, uh, English language development In education, you may, um, have heard that there's, in recent years, there's been a shift from, um, a deficit mindset to more of an assets-based mindset. And, um, what that, what that means is, instead of us focusing on what students lack, or how much they need to grow, um, from the time they enter our, our school buildings, we focus on what they're bringing to our programming. Um, the experiences, the rich, um, language and culture, and, um, other, other knowledge and other talents that, um, need to be celebrated, uh, within our schools. Uh, in multilingual education, um, what this looks like is, um, a, a trend to, uh, referring to our multilingual learners as that. They, um, speak, uh, a first language that might be different, that is other than English. They might speak two languages before they learned English. And we're, uh, focusing as much as we can on that assets-based approach, where they're adding to their language repertoire. It's not what they lack, it's what they, it's what they're bringing, um, to the table. And I've just listed here just several examples of assets that, um, we need to celebrate in our schools and in our programming, um, such as the life experiences that they bring in, um, cultural funds of knowledge, so all the traditions and cultures and, um, different perspectives on, on the world. Language brokering roles. Many of our multilingual students have served as interpreters for their family members for years, um, which is, which is a very challenging skill and, um, skill to have, a very challenging task. Their unique educational experiences, uh, we found out, uh, during, um, some of the distance learning, that, uh, there are high levels of roles and responsibilities that students are responsible for, um, at home. They have often, you know, um, tremendous skills in oral language and literacy skills in a first and maybe second, or maybe third language. Um, and where we might have in the past look at, looked at what they need to grow in language, they bring to us so many strengths and possibly, um, great strengths in, in many other academic So when we look at, um, students that are identified within our district as English language, um, English learners, uh, who receive instructional, um, support, uh, from our English learner teachers, and the state, and actually the federal government mandates that, um, all English learners, uh, participate in the access, um, accountability assessment every year. And you can see, uh, on this screen, uh, what our participation rates have been over the past four years. Um, pretty consistent until you can notice the drop in, um, this past year, which for obvious reasons, we had, uh, less participation due to COVID. The state also, uh, gives us, um, target, uh, growth scores for students. Again, that was how it was going before, uh, COVID hit. But, um, the trends that you can see of students meeting their growth targets are, um, in that, uh, right-hand column. So, while we are seeing some, some magnificent progress, um, and we're, we're doing, we've done a lot in recent years to really enhance the programming that we offer, um, to our multilingual learners, we have a lot of room to grow. And, uh, we really have an obligation to do more to meet, uh, the needs of our multilingual learners, not only in their language-specific instruction, but throughout the school day in all their content areas. And so I just wanted to highlight a few of our focal areas, um, in, uh, multi, multilingual education, but together with, with the whole CISA department, and, um, really tying together projects and strategies and professional, professional development this year. Um, one of the things I'm most excited about is, um, PSYAP, which stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. It's a very well-known, um, evidence-based, um, model for meeting the needs of, um, multilingual learners within their content classes. We currently have, uh, a cohort of, um, K-12 teachers participating in, uh, PSYAP training, uh, which will include some virtual training, some in-person training, as well as classroom observations and coaching. Um, and that will run throughout the school year. There's a lot of interest in that, so I'm hoping to, um, maybe put together a second cohort, maybe for the second half of the school year. Um, we are also doing, uh, elementary site-based sessions around, uh, some of the PSYAP strategies, um, very focused on, um, student talk and the ideas of how to highlight and celebrate the assets that students bring, um, to school. We have a, a really strong connection with the work we're doing with, uh, CPSS, um, where the lesson study components that are the focus of much of the CPSS work in, in our buildings includes, um, the top components are, um, giving students opportunities to dialogue in class, at least four times in every class period. Um, giving students opportunities, um, for choice and, um, student voice, as well as some very specific scaffolds for, um, multilingual learners. Our focus in elementary math is math talk, so that ties in very nicely with, again, getting students talking and giving them those structured, planned opportunities to speak with each other and with the teacher, uh, during class. Um, at the, at the secondary level, many of our, um, English learner teachers attended, um, AVID, uh, training this summer in academic language. And, uh, they've been given opportunities to co-plan, together with their co-teaching partners, to really, um, embed those AVID strategies and academic language strategies within their, their content areas. Our, our focus on social emotional learning at all levels, uh, really highlights the fact of, again, giving students opportunities to talk and interact, but also to talk about themselves and their strengths and, and tell their stories. And, um, the last, um, item on this screen is, uh, family engagement. Um, we're continuing to, to meet with our multilingual families, um, at the district level, but also at, at the building level with a lot of collaboration with, uh, cultural liaisons. We're also, um, getting started, um, kind of restarting a suc, very successful program we've had in the past, which is the FIRE Academy for Parents. And, uh, we'll be starting, um, to be, to plan for that, and cultural liaisons will, will facilitate that in, um, I, at, at least six different cohorts this, this year. But we'll see, uh, how, with the planning process, how that, uh, when that all gets scheduled. But that's part of the plan for this school year. Um, finally, uh, something, a source of great pride for me, um, and something that has, um, you know, been going for a few years within the district, but is, um, uh, something that Minnesota has really been a leader on, and that is the Seal of Multiliteracy. And, um, what it is, is it's an opportunity for, uh, students in grades, uh, ten, eleven, and twelve, to participate in a, in a, in a language proficiency, proficiency exam, and, um, demonstrate their proficiency in a language in addition to, to English. Um, depending on the results of that exam, they can earn up to four college credits, um, for, uh, different Minnesota state colleges, and even some private schools in the state grant college credits for, um, that, that proficiency exam. And you can see there, we've, we've had some great success, we've had, we've grown the program each year, um, we've had students, you know, ten students get the platinum award and fifteen golds and, and twenty-seven world language proficiencies, and we've even had stu, one student, um, get, um, proficiency awards in both Spanish and Somali. And you can see each year we've, um, grown it a little bit more, starting with, um, Spanish, but we've added additional languages. Um, and it's just a really, uh, great opportunity to celebrate, um, multilingualism. And, um, as a district, it, like I said, it's a source of pride that we have, um, so many language, um, multilingual learners. And, um, I, I feel proud to, to say that, um, we've had great success with, with that And with that, I would open it up for questions. Um, again, thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Um, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, this is one of my topics I find most interesting, and, um, you know, I love hearing about all this, and thank you for coming and presenting this information.
Welcome, thank you.
My question, um, pertains to, you know, especially when you talk about the students who are, um, it's like they carry the burden for their family, you know, they're, they're acting as the interpreter for their entire family. And I guess my question is twofold, because that weight is, is hard for them to carry, I, you know, I feel, because, um, that puts a lot of pressure on them. So, do you feel that that, in some times, carries that weight, um, sets them back in meeting some of those goals? When you showed the, um, slide where it talks about not meeting the goals, as far as the ones who meet it and the one, the ones that don't, um, do you feel like some of those pressures maybe contribute to them not meeting those goals? And then, secondly, um, do you look at anything like, um, bringing in multicultural, culturally specific student support services for those students? Um, and I'm wondering, like, um, what types of those, what are those, what do those services look like that can support specifically students to have those, you know, heavy lifts with their family where they might be struggling, you know, because they have, you know, the weight of their family and trying to support, you know, being that, that one person that can speak a little English in their family?
Right. Can I just, sure, jump in with that one?
One of the things, too, that we're looking at is though, um, while we have some of these, the children are taking up some of that responsibility, um, we're really trying to train ourselves to look at that as, what is the asset that that child is gaining from that? In that, uh, you know, more proficiency, more connection with their family, um, you know, uh, ability to navigate, uh, conversations with adults. And so there are a lot of assets that that kind of responsibility can bring. Um, and what we want to do is, as you say, create those supports for that student, so that we can really, um, you know, recognize and support those types of assets for them, and, uh, make sure that, that, you know, when the student needs assistance, when the student needs something, that we can create an environment to provide that.
Okay.
And we do provide, you know, culturally specific, um, support systems for students along with our cultural liaisons.
Okay. Thank you. And it is something that we're, we're always looking towards, like, how can we enhance the, the, the welcome process and the, the, what are, what kind of supports are we giving to our, um, uh, new-to-country, newly arrived, uh, students in terms of, um, you know, who's, who's helping them, perhaps in their first language, to, um, show them around the school and orient them to, to exactly like how school works and, and, and things like that. So we are, um, you know, there, there's, there's some, some funds through, through Title III and through other grants that we've been able to, to dedicate to that, but there's always room to grow on that as well.
Which is also one of the key strategies for the two positions, um, district-wide, is, uh, working, uh, working from the enrollment center, having that, that personalized interpretation onsite without having to call somebody new in, somebody who knows the system and can assist with families that are new to our district, um, families that, uh, speak a different home language, um, and make sure that they do feel welcome and that we are providing them with that orientation.
Thank you for tying that in. Yeah, that, that helps.
Maria, just, oh, go ahead. Sure.
Thank you. Director, I'd like to add, uh, another piece. As you all know, we are committed to intercultural competency. And so reflecting on some interactions I've had with multilingual learners and families and the reading, I have to put in context that we're burdeners, stressors, because what I'm learning is, these, uh, children, adolescents, and teenagers believe it's an honor for all the sacrifices their elders did to get them here. So it's kind of, it's a, another task, but it's honorable to them that they're helping their elders. And so while I may view it as growing up as an American teenager, like, mom is asking me and grandma's asking me to do what? It's not always that when we think of that stress. So I just wanted to point that out, too. And I see Maria shaking.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for saying that.
Very interesting dynamic from a different cultural perspective. And so I, I have to suspend my lens as growing up as an American teenager.
Right. And, and celebrate that they're able to, to, to do those things that, um, in, in more than one language, um, and to bear that responsibility. Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Maria, for being here. And, you know, I heard you say celebrate in asset. And, um, that is more than I've ever heard, being a second language speaker in any district, any state that I've went to school with. Because it's not what they're lacking, it's what they're bringing to us that we need to work with. So I want to thank you and your staff for making sure that families hear that.
Yes.
And it's nothing to be embarrassed or hide.
Yes.
Um, honestly, that's how I grew up, and not that I went to school here, as, uh, elementary, but, um, that's what I kind of have gone through, um, starting at the age of three, was to hide yourself and not bring that language to school.
Right.
Um, so thank you. I also wanted to kind of, um, touch base what Amina said about the two additional staff. You, Maria, did you have any say in that? Were you able to kind of coordinate that with Amina or bring that forward?
We, we talk a lot about, um, how we could be, um, more supportive in terms of, in the enrollment center, in, um, not only, uh, greeting and making families feel welcome, but helping them, uh, through the process of enrollment and, um, being that first, um, touch point to, uh, learning about the, the resources that the district, that the district has available.
And Maria has also, uh, been included in the interview and selection for, you know, making a recommendation for those hires as well.
Great, great. Um, I know you mentioned few, or not few, just a lot of my milestones, including partnering up with AVID. What are some things that you are seeing since COVID, you know, that you see as maybe being an impact in the next few years or a couple of years, and that you would want people to know?
Um, that's a really good question. Um, thanks, thanks for asking. Um, I think in part, that's, that's part of the impetus in, um, our focus this year on, on assets and asset-based approach, is that it's really tempting to, um, approach this school year thinking about, oh no, all the time we have to make up and all the, all the loss, and really to turn that around and reframe it, especially for our multilingual learners who, um, in, in many cases, you know, some of our older students. some of our older students bore a great responsibility with working, having a job, and going to school virtually, and just really managed a lot. So I think that that's really our first step, the first big point of emphasis is to recognize that we're not coming in to the school year having lost. We're coming in having built other skills. And how can we, you know, progress from here rather than counting all the things that we missed? Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
I'm curious to learn a little bit more about, is it access? The access test, is it a test or?
Yes, it's a test.
Okay. So for the targets, is that a standardized? How does that work? Is it an individual target for each student, based on like progress from A to B or?
Yep. You have to score a certain, you have to get a certain result in order to pass the access test. And the growth, sort of their projected or their targets for each year, take into account their previous year's score and the time that research says they should be able to reach proficiency. And then that's kind of broken up by how many more years they have to reach that. So it's kind of a complex formula. But it really is a reflection of, you know, what they're expected to grow each year in order to make that proficiency level in five years or seven years, which is what's expected.
Okay, thank you.
So my understanding for the access is it does get reviewed and changed as time goes on, right? The levels and the proficiency and all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I really appreciated receiving this report. And particularly, I loved seeing on the bigger monitor the teeny-tiny little font for how many, how many of our students speak each of the different languages? That was, I was focusing in on that because I was really curious to see, okay, what are the languages that our students are speaking?
It's a hard visual to share because it is hard to show the impact of it without the print being so tiny.
And we do the best we can.
Yes.
And I guess, a couple of different questions and comments. So I'm a language person. And, you know, typically in education, at least in our district, we've referred to our students as EL students and our teachers as EL teachers. Yet I hear your title includes multilingual. Is there an expectation that as a district, we're eventually going to have to backtrack and change all those labels? Are we able to change those labels?
From past records?
No, like, you know, the way, so among ourselves now, you know, we recognize the asset, you know, the asset perspective of multilingual versus EL. And so that's how we want to think about our students. The label itself is very important, whether it's in policy, whether it's in curriculum, wherever you might see EL. Is it our expectation that at some point, outside of whatever federal funding and requirements there might be, obviously, that we would get to a point where it's now multilingual as opposed to an EL teacher?
That's my hope, and that's definitely what a lot of, you know, language experts and researchers are pushing for. It's, you know, the terminology that's been used has changed a lot over the years. And it's hard to get everybody like on the same page because the teacher license says ESL and the MDE documentation says LEP. And there are different acronyms that have stood the test of time and others that have not. My hope is that we do find a way to make the multilingual learner term more widely used, even if we can't change all those forms. But what I've been asking and encouraging with teachers and principals is, you know, in conversation, when we're having conversations, let's try, you know, use the term "multilingual learners." And, you know, where we have to clarify for funding or for other state requirements, we'll do that. But let's make an effort to speak from an assets-based approach as much as possible.
Director, to give you an example, just today, we were in a collaboration meeting with finance. And so all the financial records, they have LEP, Limited English Proficiency. So right there, it's a negative. English as a Second Language, ESL. And there's a few others, it was TESOL. And so they were getting up to speed. Maria was sharing to them, we use multilingual even though the finance refers to all these terms.
Well, and it's a translation that staff needs to do because the label matters. When you see LEP, when you see ESL, even if that's what it needs to be, then it should be read as multilingual because that is where we are.
Exactly. And I also like to, Maria and I have talked a lot about the fact that we're talking about language acquisition. Whether we're talking about English-speaking students learning Spanish or Spanish-speaking students learning English, it's language acquisition. And in all of that, under that umbrella, is multilingual education. The teachers who are helping students learn to speak English or learn to be literate in English, those are English language development teachers. And, I mean, that's what they are. But I think the learners themselves don't need to be labeled with that deficit language.
Absolutely. And just kind of dovetailing on that, it's just so exciting for me looking at where we are tonight, what we're talking about versus what I remember when I first started on the board and where we were with our multilingual students. Very different place, much more healthy, much more holistic. And I can't thank you enough for the work that you're doing because they're gonna, you know, we're all gonna benefit from it.
Thank you. And I do, I can't leave without, you know, applauding our EL teaching staff in District 191. They're very, very strong advocates for our multilingual students, as are our principals and our cultural liaisons are so important in our work. So I'm very, I feel very fortunate to be surrounded by such a passionate and strong team.
And one last question. Okay, I'll limit it just to one because I don't want to take up too much time. So FIRE Academy, excited to hear that it's coming back. I know that we started with FIRE I and FIRE II, and then a few years ago, we added FIRE III. Are we offering all three of those? Do we plan to?
Next week, I'm holding a planning meeting with our cultural liaisons, many of whom have been through several years of the FIRE Academy. So I'm going to take my lead from them and see what they think after not having done it for a couple of years, or at least just last year, maybe, what might be the best way to get that kicked off again. They already have ideas that we might want to target it toward, you know, some of the courses towards parents of elementary students and others to secondary. So the ideas are all kind of in the works.
And that'll be another great report to hear how FIRE Academy did.
It's always been a really, a really well-received, popular program.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have one comment, just again thanking you for moving to such an asset base of language because I think it's critical in terms of continuing positive identity of all our students and to not think that anybody is of a deficit compared to another student. I just completely value that. And I thank you for making that happen here.
Absolutely, thank you.
So on that point, I wanted to, so a little side note, I don't know how to write Somali, right? And only because it was kind of a more of a hide it when I was three, four, five, six, right? So if I would have had this type of language, this type of support, I think I would have picked up on it a lot earlier and not in my adult years to learn how to write Somali and read Somali. But I do speak it fluently. That was the only way to communicate with Mom and Dad. But I just want you to know the impact, it's just a lifelong impact.
Thank you for sharing that. We do have currently one heritage language course at the high school, which is a Spanish heritage language course for native Spanish speakers. But just this afternoon, I was just talking with Principal Helkey about what, you know, what can we do to have more heritage language courses? Starting off, you know, Somali would be probably the next one.
But I know many professors have already started that process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? All right, well, thank you very much, both of you, for coming tonight and speaking. What you do is critical in any learning environment. I think it's exponentially critical here in this district. And I know I speak for the board, saying that we're very appreciative of what you're doing. And we think what you're doing is very important, critical to what we want to have happen in this district. So I know you're working with supportive people and you have a supportive environment, but if there are things you need, please don't be shy about making your voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we are going to move on to receiving an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the Minnesota Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health, respectively. Speaking on this topic will be Dr. Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. Tonight, I will share an overview of COVID-related topics that may impact our district. Then Stephanie White will share county and 191 data and more information regarding calibration walkthroughs at sites. Lastly, just a note about those calibration walkthroughs. With any new school year, it takes practice and reminders to establish routines again in schools. Even after we have our natural breaks, winter break and spring, we have to have reminders about school rituals and routines. The fall safety mitigation strategies are being monitored and adjusted by site leaders. And Stephanie White and the nurses will conduct calibration walkthroughs as we have done in the past, and she'll explain more later in this report. Lastly, Brian Gersich will share updates from the planning team and also from activities and athletics team. So the first topic I like to share information about that may impact our district is employee vaccines. So Minnesota Department of Education did share with superintendents and charter school leaders regarding President Biden's announced series of measures to increase COVID-19 vaccination rates across the country. The message they share is that the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry has received many questions about the information President Biden shared regarding required COVID-19 vaccines or testing policies for employees with 100, with more, employers with 100 or more employees. So President Biden's order is going through the Department of Labor and Industry. The, that department is awaiting Minnesota through OSHA. So OSHA is where the directors will come from. So we're still waiting at guidance about Minnesota's action plan. And as MDE says, as soon as information is available, they'll share with us. I did check with Executive Director Stacy Silvine for human resources. Did we receive the OSHA guidance from Minnesota? So each state has to issue the guidance. Another topic, oh, excuse me, also related to this. So there's been some preparation, if we do receive guidance, that school districts will be required. So Minnesota Department of Health, because there are employers in the state with 100 or more employees, they just launched a process using our Minnesota immunization collection that they have that will allow the individuals to fill out a form that states they are allowing the data to be shared with their employer. So the Department of Health would get the consent from employees. And then it'll be automated. So it's currently functioning now for corporate and other employers. And so staff and I are currently reviewing that information. It was just really shared recently, this week, of how that would work in districts. The next topic is requiring vaccines for students 12 years of age and older. So state statute stipulates the required vaccines. And the statute is 121A dot 1.5 Health Standards Immunizations for Schoolchildren. There is a chart that Minnesota Department of Health has put together with all of the required vaccinations for children and adolescents and teenagers. And also included in the chart are recommended vaccines, and there are currently two. COVID-19 and influenza is recommended. I have consulted with our legal counsel and verified that state statute stipulates required vaccinations for children. And if a school district independently requires additional vaccines, we should always vet the possible issues. Also, the state of Minnesota, which is connected to this, is developing a strategy for administering COVID-19 vaccines for children ages five to 11, once approved by federal officials. And as part of this work, the state has asked districts to complete a survey regarding our capacity to host vaccination sites. So those are the topics that I wanted to share tonight that may impact us. We don't have final information yet, but I wanted to keep you updated because, as you know, it's a big hot buzz in the media and social media. And so just wanted to share where we are as a district, as staff. And so with that, I'll ask Stephanie White, our Director of Student Support Services, and then Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, to share the remainder of the report.
Thank you, Superintendent Battle and Board. I'm here tonight representing Bernie, being our lead LSN, and will do my best to represent her well. We get our data from several sources, the Minnesota Department of Health, Dakota County, and Scott County. And each of them provide us very useful data, but in a different format. And so I'll try and let you know kind of where our data is coming from tonight. Weekly case rates per 10,000 by county for the week of September 11th. Dakota County is 19.6, down from, slightly down from 20.3. Scott County is 30, which is up from 21.3. For the week of September 18th, the positivity percentage, Dakota County, is 6.1%. Last week, slightly up, was 6.5%. And Scott County is an 8.6%, last week, 6.9%. Scott County gave us some information around school age and the number of cases this week and the percentage of those. And so their highest percentage is between our 12- and 19-year-olds, with 50% of their cases in school age again. The second was the five-through-11-year-olds. There was 85 cases in Scott County for a 32%. And zero-to-four-year-olds, there were 47 cases, which is 18%. Adding all those up, that gives you 266 new cases, school age, in Scott County. Overall, in our district, we have had 35 positive cases for students, back from when new teachers began to now. We've also had eight positive staff cases. In the last week, or the last two weeks, our Health Services Department has investigated 12 cases of positive individuals infectious during the school day. The prior two weeks, so I didn't do any overlap, I just did the prior two weeks, there were 20. There were 23 prior case investigations. A little but, a little update on vaccinations. Minnesota, on the Minnesota Department of Health website, is reporting 73% vaccination rates of at least one of 16 and older. And 18 plus is 76.2% older. On the Department of Health website, they report that Scott County is overall at 62%. But I believe Scott County would say it's higher in real time from that. And Dakota County is saying one dose is 66% overall. In Dakota County, we know that 12 and older for one dose is 79%. And 16 and older is 80%. So under Dr. Battle's leadership, we continue to continually try to improve how we're looking at our data and how we can make it the most useful for ourselves in planning and in sharing that information out. And some of the things we're reflecting on is the impact of quarantine, the impact of isolation. Those two things do happen because of an exposure at school, but they also happen for many other reasons as well for families. And so we're looking at that and just overall COVID impact on our families and our students and how that's reflected in our response towards them. Overall attendance rates due to COVID impact, whatever that is, is another point of data that we'll be reflecting on and, and looking for more information.
And the calibration.
And then the calibration. So last year, we learned that calibration efforts were very positive when we would walk through the buildings with nurses or with principals. And this year, we're going to build capacity right within their buildings to work with principals to do those calibration visits with each other, as well as with their health service staff. And what that looks like is just walking through the building, talking to staff, talking to students, making those observations on how does three feet look, how does six feet look? How do the barriers or physical configurations of classrooms, how, how are they evolving? And then encouraging them to do that several times during the year. Right now, because we're a little busy, those are happening as a result of investigations. So there's lots of calibration that happens, but it's, it's not, it's as a result of us just going in and measuring and doing some of those things that are part of our investigation.
And the other information that you shared right before this meeting, we have to remember that our nurses are also seeing students for typical reasons. So I think at the high school today, what was the number you gave me?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, just on typical. Plus, they also have to complete contact tracing. Walkthrough is just a litany of additional responsibilities related to COVID among, that they're doing also in addition to regular day-to-day. So I just really wanted to give much appreciation to our now nurses and our health professional staff. It's been quite a first few weeks.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Dr. Battle. And I think we're continuing to look at what we can take off their plates or use other staff members to support them so that they can prioritize the work that, that's at hand. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Battle, Chair Miller, and members of the board. I just wanted to give you an update. Our team that has planned for those shifts historically in instructional methodology met again earlier this week to try to start doing some planning. And I'll kind of explain that process. But just as a reminder, this is not a decision-making group, it's an implementation group. And we try to make sure that we are prepared for potential shifts that are made to learning models as a result of COVID-19. And it's a group that works across all of our coordinators, directors, principals, not all the principals, representatives from all those areas between operations and instruction to make sure that we consistently collaborate and communicate so that if we needed to make a shift, we are doing that as efficiently as possible so that we are not having downtime in instruction for our students as much as we can. So again, we met on Monday, and our process was to start that planning. I think if you've watched the news, you've realized that there are districts that have already started to shift learning models for their schools. Early this week or late last week, there was an elementary school in Chisholm, Minnesota. If you saw the news just yet, yesterday, Edison High School in Minneapolis had to adjust because of rates of COVID transmission. So our planning is not saying that we think it's going to happen, or it's any kind of an indicator. It's simply a matter of saying we've worked really hard over the last 18 months to be prepared so that if something happens, we are way down the road with our pre-flight, in-flight checklist so that if something happens, be it at a classroom, a grade level, a school site, or the entire district, we're prepared to make those shifts again as quickly as we can for the sake of mitigating how much instructional time might be lost for our students. So what we're looking at is historically, we were here talking about potential shifts from in-person to hybrid to distant learning. Those were as a result of previous executive orders, which no longer exist from the governor. And so what we're using is existing statute to prepare ourselves, which actually references what's called blended learning. Blended learning is taking a combination of in-person time and online instructional time. Our flexibility in doing that is aided by the fact that we became a certified online learning site. So the fact that we have an online school as a part of our district gives us more flexibility in utilization of that statute than districts who don't. Number of days, reporting procedures, et cetera. So it is a benefit to us to have that. And what we'd be preparing for, conceptually, when we say blended learning, is similar to what it would look like in a distant learning environment. Students would learn, have expectations to use their devices and get instruction in a remote environment or online for periods of time. And again, conceptually also, we talk about if there are high rates of transmission, do we do a temporary shift to online to mitigate, slow the spread and bring students back in? So it's really kind of that ebb and flow between in-person learning and potential previously distant learning. We're not using that language to help differentiate. We are using the blended learning statute. It is the blended learning model that we're really talking about. So again, that's something that we're preparing for. We started meeting on Monday. We will continue meeting next week. We certainly hope that things don't happen between now and then that would necessitate utilization of that. If it did, I'm confident that the team would figure it out. But we are going to be better planned as we continue, again, to work together to develop those checklists, to develop those items in partnerships on how we're going to work together to make some of those things happen. As far as athletics and activities, as I've mentioned before, we continue to meet every Thursday to review our process and procedures. I will say that as we've gone down the road of contact tracing and things that have happened as a result of sports or activities, our spread really is consolidated to ride-sharing experiences for close contacts than they are about the actual activities themselves. So certainly, we continue to communicate the importance of masking and finding ways to, to limit those things, but obviously, that's a reality. And we understand that people will do that. But even today, we reviewed the process of how many students over the course of our sports and activities have been required to quarantine and what necessitated that quarantine. It is not a result of the activities themselves in the majority of those cases. It is a result of those things that happened incidentally before and after. The other thing I'd say about athletics and activities that we did make some amendments to is procedures that allows more access to locker rooms than we previously had. Before, it was fairly limited to swimming, as well as football due to equipment. We also knew that we were getting some requests from, I think, across countries, an example, where it's not the same as, you know, let's call it volleyball, as an example, where the materials and things are sitting on the side. They take off and run and can't take their phones or keys or the things with them. So from a security perspective, as well as, you know, just the fact that we know that there are some of those needs, we did allow some of those, but certainly expected and required additional mitigations and formalized written plans on what the procedures are to ensure that no one, as a result of that, becomes a close contact or expands some of that risk. So those are my updates.
And that concludes our report.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up for any questions or comments from board members?
So I'm curious. Obviously, I want to commend our team, our, our COVID team for the amount of work that's gone into planning. I feel we've done an exceptional job. But compared to other schools, I'm just curious, like, what, what data do we have? Do we know, like, case rates that they've gotten as far as what decisions they've used to make to change to hybrid? And how that compares to like, what, because you've said, what did you say? It's, there's not really guidelines now, so it's kind of up to, so on our team, our committee, have we discussed what, like, is there a magic number of how many cases we will use to decide if we're going to go to hybrid or where is, you know, what other schools are doing? I, I, but I am curious too, just for how much we've done to mitigate this compared to other schools that maybe haven't done what we've done? What their cases are compared to ours, because I know we must not be anywhere near what they are.
I can, I can address that.
Okay, I can also, after you.
Okay, we had one elementary school that we saw several cases, three or four. And so our process has been to call a regional support team to come in and meet with us. And so the principal, the nurse, myself, and then our regional support team epidemiologist, they met with us to, and asked us a series of questions about what we were doing within that school and then gave us some suggestions on different things that we can do, you know, just towards mitigations and, and ideas to keep that going. So they felt that we had a really good plan in place. They felt we were doing everything possible that we could. We ourselves saw some things that we could potentially do. But the good news about the data at that particular school, and really everywhere, is that our investigations aren't saying, aren't demonstrating that it's transmission within our buildings. The investigations are illustrating that it's happening, you know, other places, homes, whatever, other places, activities. And that is key to knowing when it is time to go to a blended learning model. And right now, it looks like it would be small amounts of students, you know, with where we're at now. But as Brian said, you can see other school districts and all that can change really fast. And so being ready for all different scenarios will be key, I think, to our success.
And so in our public health meeting, I and fellow superintendents asked a very similar question. And so first, it's a local decision. So what you heard about Chisholm and Minneapolis Public Schools, Minnesota Department of Health is not directing. It is a local decision. So looking at our criteria, we, Stephanie, you'll have to help me. LDI, I, influenza?
Oh, influenza, like symptoms is, is one of the things that they track, yes.
That they will track. And so the other part of your question, so it is a local decision, what steps you take. And so that's part of the resolution that you passed that I would consult with the chair and you and let you know if I'm going to shift. The second part that we were asking about, is there any difference in the mitigation strategies? So as you know, we require masks. There are some districts that do not. But what they're finding is what Stephanie, they can't really distinguish that because COVID, it can be anywhere. And so if you have a major event in your city or your community where everyone is there and they don't require masks, that could be, and then they come to school Monday morning. So it, it's just, it's really hard to say it's a spreading, well, not hard. They can determine based on the contact tracing. But as Stephanie said, it could be anywhere in the community. So it's really difficult to look at the mitigation strategies that districts are employing when kids aren't isolated to us and their home.
Right.
That answer helpful?
Yes, yep, yep. Thank you.
I guess what, which brings me to this question, maybe Stephanie can help with this. But I know it's a local decision. Does this maybe open up that collaboration with local hospitals and clinics? Because there's many, obviously with the new saying that, you know, pediatric-wise and beds and all that is very limited and that we are seeing more COVID and transmission through that younger age group. Is that included in this local decision that, that some of the schools have already made? But something that, we, do we look at that also?
I think we have great community partners through Park Nicollet. They often are sending us information to read that we can forward on to, to our health services staff around kind of how our hospitals and clinics are doing around us. We have that new partnership with Dakota Child and Family Clinic. They help us to stay on top of kind of those numbers. And then our weekly meetings with the Department of Health, Dakota County and Scott County. And so those, that's our sources of information on some of those. And unfortunately, we would not be able to make our decision based on that. We would have to make, really have it be very targeted to, do we see transmission in our building? And if we do, taking, you know, mitigations, really, quarantining is a mitigation strategy, right? And so we're using that one already. And, and then making a decision if Dr. Battle decides to do a classroom or a grade level, those are again, our mitigation strategies to give spaces and groups of people time away from each other so they're not transmitting.
All right, thank you. And then Brian, you mentioned, you know, this time around, if we were to transition to the blended learning. And I'm guessing this conversation probably has happened with your team already. But I'm just curious, has any conversation or perspectives from how this would happen for teachers? Because the first time around, it was all learning for all of us, right? But especially the teachers were hit hard. So what are some things that you and your team for sure know that to do better, you know, that we can do better this time? Because we have, we have that experience before and not put so much weight as before on our educators.
Yeah, no, great, great question. I think part of what we talked about on Monday was capitalizing on what we knew that went well. But that was also part of the language shift to make sure that when we look at distant learning versus this blended learning in the new year and things are different, what are we capitalizing on that worked really well? And so I would just say, like, when we look at the elementary perspective, one of their tasks, tasks and takeaways from Monday, which was a part of their pre-flight checklist, was identify what went well, what are the things that might need to be different, and identify those new staff members to our team that were not with us last year. And what is the professional development that we need to start right now? Similar, kindergarten and first grade, as they come in, kindergarten especially, were not a part of our system last year and minimally would have had that exposure. What are we doing to prepare our students right now for the ability to access the learning on the devices while they are with us in the classroom? So those are some things that we're trying to start doing right now to get people's awareness to, we can't just send students home with a device and then teach them how to use them. We need to teach them how to use them while we have them all in front of us at this time. A similar shift needs to happen, thinking of the high schools as an example too. If you recall, when we started the year in a hybrid model, they went to somewhat of an alternating day block schedule, four periods per day. We are currently operating in a seven-period day. How does that translate if we move into a virtual environment for a short, hopefully, period of time? What are those expectations, things going to look like about students? Are we going to roll that through the seven-period day? Are they going to be proposing something different? Is still a part of what we're talking about, while also talking about those instructional practices that worked well that we need to capitalize on as we move forward. So those are just a couple of examples, I think.
Great. And then when it comes to, you know, we all understand that students and children are way more advanced in technology than any of us adults, right? But as far as that professional development that you mentioned and that computer literacy for our educators, I'm, I'm guessing that's one of the other things that you're looking at and your team are looking at, correct?
That's correct, yeah. When I think about it from our secondary, in, in the things that we have, like Schoology at the secondary level and CSOW, a lot of our learning platforms are a part of our system.
Already, yes.
So now it's about making sure how quickly are we implementing how to get in there? Or if we're going to do some of the Google meets, that probably isn't a part of the in-person learning right now. But it is a part of the preparation for the online or blended learning portion of this because we have to make sure that we have that ability to do those synchronous interactions with our students.
I agree. And the younger grades would really benefit from a mute button, just.
Additional questions?
Thank you, Chair Miller. So you got me thinking about tech. And so remembering last, and hopefully, all of this planning will be, will be put on a shelf. We won't need it. on a shelf, we won't need it.
That's the hope.
Yeah, I'm being optimistic. Um, but remembering how important technology is, um, and also access to broadband. I'm imagining that, you know, Rachel and her department are helping with that checklist, knowing that, you know, we're going to need to help our families and our staff if something has to happen, um, on the turn of a dime.
Correct, yep. Uh, Rachel Gordon is a key part of that and has been planning for some of these things for a while, as well as utilizing community programs to access broadband for families uh, with a financial need, ensuring that we are preparing now for potential distribution of hotspots for families that need them, what that process looks like, the process of, you know, making sure that we have devices issued to students. Again, middle school and high school have devices already issued to them. Elementary students right now with our K and one have had classroom devices, but not necessarily assigned device per, per child. So all of those things have been going on and are now, you know, again, taking on just another level of, of formality as we have the planning process.
And I also wanted to echo gratitude to, um, the planning team, no, oh, the, the planning team, not the implementation team, of course, because, um, it's important, it's so important to have that, you know, as you referenced last year, in-flight planning. Um, and, you know, hopefully, you know, the plane never takes off the ground and, you know, we just have our ducks in a row and, and our kids are able to, to s- stay in school. Because that really, I mean, that's really everything that we're working toward is trying to keep our kids in person with their learning. So, um, if we have to change, I feel confident that, that we'll be in a good place.
Yep. I appreciate that. I just want to say a thanks to Amina Oftedal and Dave Lake, who've kind of been what we call the operations and instructional side champions. And it's always been, there's never a reason not to have somebody to go to with a question as we work to communicate and partner across all our areas. That communication has been great and it's in large part because of their abilities to, to be willing to do some of those leadership things too.
So I just had, um, so oftentimes when we hear reporting in terms of numbers of, you know, positivity and exposures of, we are now also hearing a secondary number of, you know, breakthrough cases. And so was wondering, since we have vaccinations for those 12 and older in some of the middle school and high school, um, uh, um, where you're, um, going through if there's a positive case and doing the, the tracking, if any of, if we're finding, or, I mean, I know we won't have an answer now, if, if any of those might be related to a, a breakthrough.
Um, I can confidently say that we have had breakthrough cases, but I can also confidently say that vaccines, along with masks and three feet, have prevented the majority. So I, I know one school that had a potential of 30 quarantined students and we ended with eight because of the vaccines and the distance and the mitigations that were in place with no transmission to date. So I know that's, uh, very positive.
Thank you.
One more question before we leave this topic. I promise we will leave it. Um, so for students who are quarantined, for instance, maybe 10 days, the doctor gave them a 10-day stay-home letter, right? Do they directly communicate with their teacher, teachers? Or is there something that's already been kind of set aside that they, is that blending learning coming in, like in that 10 days? Because that's a lot of learning missed. So I'm just curious, because I know parents have asked.
Yep. So at, at this very moment, I would say that we're utilizing online platforms, so it's not quite the same as that blended learning model, but we are continuing to review that and discuss what those look like, simply because again, I think the numbers that we projected coming into the year evolved over the course of the planning process. And so like everything, we have to continue to revisit and find out if that's being effective or if we need to, if we need to pivot.
All right. And you mentioned the online platform, so I, can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, CSOW and, uh, and School E G where we post-
The stuff that we already have.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you very much for all your presentation. All right, this time we're going to move, uh, to board committee, board appointment and school assignment reports. Um, I will, let's start with our standing committees. I'll, uh, begin with the legislative committee.
Great.
Where, should I start somewhere else?
No, we're good. Um, so the legislative committee met, um, a couple of weeks ago and we had Senator Clausen join our meeting, uh, because one of the things that was recommended to us, um, during the last legislative session was to, um, as we want to reintroduce this bill related to, for exemption on the sale of our properties, um, we wanted to start the process earlier. And so based off of that recommendation, we had Senator Clausen join our meeting, um, and, uh, he and, um, he's recommending, uh, Senator Port to, to lead, um, that process and he is going to be secondary in terms of putting that bill forward on the Senate side. And then Representative Hannah, Hanson has agreed to sponsor again as well. Um, and Senator Clausen is recommended and is going to personally be reaching out to, um, Roger, Senator Roger Chamberlain, who is the chair of the Education Committee, because one of the key things is, uh, to request being granted a hearing to further the, the bill. And so he's going to see if we can, um, get that request through on the Education Committee and so more to follow, um, with that process.
Thank you. Policy committee.
Thank you. Uh, yes, the policy committee met on Monday, September 20th. Uh, we have several policies coming forward at our next regular board meeting in October. Uh, the, the committee meets again next on Monday, October 18th at 5:00 PM here at Diamond Head in the Egan Room.
And negotiations?
No report from negotiations.
Very good. Uh, we'll move to any board appointment and school assignment reports. Just open this up for free form. Something to add?
Um, so, uh, report from intermediate District 917. I was at their school board meeting, um, earlier this month and, um, a couple of highlights. Um, one, they're beginning the, their, uh, strategic planning process. Um, second, in their reports, which I reported last, um, month, uh, is, is that they're experiencing, like many employers, um, significant shortage in workers, um, which is also causing, uh, challenges for service to students. So they have a large waiting list right now, or a large, you know, significant waiting list. Um, and therefore, as they're looking at their finances and planning, which may impact how we discuss our district in terms of their plan for Cedar School, we're looking at a possible, uh, delay in terms of expansion until they can address the, the hiring needs. That concludes my report.
Okay. Let's just say that was fair amount of information. Any questions, Brooke?
Yeah, well, no more as, as I keep going through. So I'll, I'll provide updates in the next reports in terms of if they're meeting any of the waiting list needs or if they're, if they've, um, furthered in their hiring.
Okay.
Say a miss? Oh, okay. I was just wondering.
Move it ahead.
Okay.
You're all set.
Um, kind of on the same line, you were talking about, um, the MSBA has, um, a meeting, meetings once a month for new school board members, you know, yes, new school board members. Um, and it's not, uh, videotaped, it's, um, they say it's very confidential. But I'm just so proud and lucky to say that we're, this district and our school board is not having any of the issues, um, to my knowledge, that these other districts are having. It's, so it's really, um, nice to, you know, it's really comforting to, and nice to have this school board be so cohesive. And anyway, so they're, um, they had everyone introduce themselves. And what they're struggling with is, um, mostly their, uh, their community. Um, their listening sessions are, they said are very, um, loud and unruly and they have to use gavels, which you've never had to use. And, uh, the superintendent seems to run the meetings in some of these districts. We don't have that issue. We agree on, um, they said, and, you know, we just agree on everything, yeah. That's, you know, it's like, what? And, um, yeah. And we just seem to be so, we agree on everything, so I just, I just, just shake my head and it's like, oh, I feel so bad for them. So anyway, so that's, that's really nice to know. Um, for the AMS, uh, AMSD Association, um, of Metropolitan School District, they had, um, us do a survey a few weeks ago on, and asked us a lot of questions. And so the results of the survey is, of course, I'm not going to give you all the statistics that they went over, but some that were pretty interesting. And this is, um, questions they asked us about the state of Minnesota first, so this is kind of the legislate, like legis- um, legislative, uh, part of the survey, the political part. Um, they said the school board, as far as, uh, the school board making the right decisions for students, now this is for the state, and the finances where they live, uh, the COVID concerns and the actions on COVID from 2020 to this year, they said they haven't changed much. So everybody still thinks it's, yeah, you know, doing okay. Um, but, um, 63% do think COVID restrictions have been effective, so that's good to know. Um, as far as the education part, so this is the part just more so in our district, I believe, or did I get to that? Anyway, the education part, not the political part, 85% feel strongly about our education. 70% of the people think their constitution amendment is a good one. 40% think funding is, is adequate for schools. 70% think the school is a safe environment. And then as far as, um, the tech and online part, uh, with the pandemic and classroom learning as opposed to, um, online learning, 78% think the teacher learning is way more, um, is much more better for their students and 40% think, um, that it's just not good at all. Um, so that was that. Um, oh, and then as far as the part that te- they did a survey just for what teachers think, 71% of teachers are concerned about the quality of education, so that's a little concerning. And then they said, um, who should determine these COVID restrictions? 40% say it should be the MDE or the, um, Department of Health. And then 36, only 36% of people think it should be Governor Walz and 24% think it should be the school board. And 58% think there should be better diversity and training in school. So that's kind of good to know. So, um, and that was a meeting that they had on September 10th. They also had a meeting on September 17th with concerns, um, for the school board, just for school, for the school board people, the districts. And the main concerns that they had were the COVID rising numbers in the classrooms, of course, uh, student mental health, parents against masks, miscommunication regarding COVID, uh, the discord on the school boards and it's, um, and the resignations and the community pressure, uh, punishing the school boards by, um, not trusting them and asking them for 10 years of financial reports, you know, just like making outlandish requests just because they're mad at the school board. This is silly. Uh, I mean, I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, it sounds childish, but anyway. Um, then angry lis- listening sessions, student behavior in schools is getting to be a problem. And, um, a pledge to education for all students is something that, um, the MSBA and AMSBD put out that everyone should kind of, I think is really good. So that's my report.
Thank you. Additional reports?
I have a very quick Hall of Fame report. So the Burnsville Hall of Fame Committee met on last Wednesday, September 15th, which feels like an eternity ago, but I guess it was only eight days. Um, the, the induction ceremony is still scheduled for two weeks from tomorrow on Friday, October 8th. Um, there will be, and the induction ceremony will be in the, um, before the football game, um, at the high school, um, and then there'll be a recognition, um, at the football game that evening as well. Um, they're, they're currently still doing their fundraising for the plaques and other expenses for this year's recognition event. And also still, as of last week, figuring out plans for snacks and drinks at the event while also respecting COVID protocols. So a lot of planning happening, um, but it seems like everything is coming together and they, looking forward to a great event in 15 days. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Any other reports this evening? Board reports? Okay. Thank you. On that, we'll wrap up the information portion of our meeting tonight. We'll move to the business meeting, beginning with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. So I'll ask if there's anything on tonight's consent agenda that you wish to remove for separate consideration. Hearing none, I will take a motion for tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, and a second please.
Second.
Go ahead.
By Director Werbe. All those in favor for passing tonight's consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to new business for this evening, beginning with, uh, um, suggesting to adopt a resolution appointing election judges for November 2nd, 2021, school district special election. Speaking on this matter will be Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
Thank you. Uh, the election is November 2nd and so the Board of Education has a resolution before you for the appointment of our election officials. Our clerk, um, Jamie Kinney has gone ahead and identified all of the various judges at the various different locations. We do have student judges included in the mix, they will all be trained. And, uh, the adoption, or the resolution, excuse me, um, that is listed before you needs to be approved at least 25 days before the date of the election. So with that, the, uh, the Board of Education, the recommendation is that the Board of Education adopts the resolution appointing the election judges for the November 2nd, 2021, school district special election.
Thank you. I will take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester and a second. Second by Director Said. Uh, any, um, questions or comments on the motion? Yes.
Just wanted to thank, um, the election judges and particularly our students that are stepping up to, um, to this, this civic experience. And, um, it's, it's an important responsibility and I was, it was, it's always a pleasure to see that our, our students are partnering with the adults in our community. So thanks to everyone for, for their time and, and volunteerism.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I, um, understand this needs to be a roll call vote? Or the resolution it is?
Okay.
I was, I thought I was being clever by actually being ahead of the ball on this.
Nice job. Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Said.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Yeah, no problem. Um, next item on our new business section tonight is a recommendation to approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2021-2023 collective bargaining agreement with the Burnsville Food Services Association. Speaking tonight, Stacy Sowine, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Um, I am bringing to you a, uh, negotiated agreement with food services. We met three times this summer between, uh, July 22nd and August 11th. The members voted in approval of it on September 16th. We had some minor language item changes throughout the contract and we have a two-year MSBA package increase of 3.81%. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2021-2023 collective bargaining agreement with the Burnsville Food Service Association and Independent School District 191.
I will take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe. Second please.
Second.
Second by Director Alts. I will open it up for any questions or comments. Seeing or hearing none? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. And that, uh, brings us to the end of our, uh, past agenda for the evening, so I will now declare a surrender. Thank you. The time is 8:18. The time is 8:18.